I found him.
Where was it?
It was in there. In like the judge's area.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we don't need like advanced screenings or anything.
No, my, my hands wouldn't have mattered. She's, she's, they were gonna be able to come back there by herself, so.
Yeah.
Nor would I. We were talking about maybe getting that for my dad, but I'm like, you know, it's a fifty year old house. Drive way's not great. You're not gonna walk around the neighborhood. It's too hilly.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I think the house might have just listed not too long ago.
Yeah, yeah, same problem. We got a yard.
Yeah, five oh two just listed not super long ago.
This one is like the second of the one on the left side from.
No, 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 we're not. But what I'm saying.
From road.
Okay.
When Dave gets back, I think we'll get started.
Is it just the four of us tonight?
Well, there's five. Doctor, I don't know. I think Chatel's going to be here. But I don't think Jason will be. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and please call the roll.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Prithridge?
Here.
Ms. Ragoo?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mayor Snavely?
Here. All right, we'll now do a pledge of allegiance. If you'd like to join us, you're welcome.
To the Republic of the British Commons, the Constitution, the Constitution, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's hefty agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any changes? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Agenda's approved. We'll move to public participation, and Chief, we're gonna begin with public recognition. One of our favorite members of the four.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Mayor and members of council. This is a special moment we have tonight, and I appreciate you indulging us as we recognize some special people. It's been a long time since we've done a formal retirement ceremony here in front of council. I remember one during COVID where we didn't come during council, but we've come to recognize Lieutenant Laura Fanning for many years of service to this community. But first, I'm gonna recognize David Patterson. He is the president of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Thirty-Eight.
Welcome.
As I stated, I'm the president of Fraternal Order of Police. I represent the officers of the City of Oxford, as well as City of Hamilton, Miami University, and a couple other jurisdictions. As president.
Mr. Fanning? Yes, you must come up.
As President of FOP and all of our members, we would like to thank you for your twenty-eight years of service. Thank you. There you go.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And while you're up here, you might as well just stay up here. All right. Well, it's a bittersweet moment as we recognize Laura for many years of service to the community. She had twenty-eight plus years to the city and then thirty-one overall to area law enforcement. I, I know we've shared a lot about her career on Facebook and throughout, but I'm gonna do a quick recap. In nineteen ninety-three, after earning her degree at Miami, she worked for Oxford Township Police and Miami University Police Departments. On July third, nineteen ninety-six, she became a patrol officer with the City of Oxford and began her career with the city. She was promoted to sergeant in twenty thirteen, and then while a sergeant, she attended the Southern Police Institute at the University of Louisville for a semester. And then she was promoted to lieutenant on March first, twenty sixteen, becoming the first female in OPD history to obtain rank. And so this, as a lieutenant, is where I think a lot of the community really got to know her, and that's where I've talked about the many different roles she served and in carrying out the community relations mission of our department. But I wanna talk about something a little more meaningful than just her career. I wanna talk about her character and the values she upholds. If you go to the city website, you'll find the OPD value statement where we list six individual values we seek to uphold, and I think Laura displayed all these and upheld all these. The first, integrity and honesty. Well, I've never known her to hold back and not tell it like it is. In a great way, but, but no. So she was always, you know, honesty goes, is paramount as a police officer. Dignity and respect for all human beings. Laura really developed personal relationships with those where I think others may have cast aside, were underprivileged, downtrodden and struggling, and she continues to have those today. People who she met on calls and, you know, she still visits in the nursing home or, and I saw that tonight at her retirement party down at La Rosa's. The constitutional rights and well-being of all persons, of course, that's very near dear value to her heart, and she always did a good job of, you know, looking out for the individual person. She held an uncompromising commitment to our oath of office. You're gonna hear another officer, our new officer, take that oath of office tonight, and, you know, that's something that we take very seriously, and Laura always did a good job of upholding that. The ideas and opinions of our citizens recognizing the need for their partnership. So again, another, this is now getting into some of the stronger traits that she embodied during this time. So often serving as that go-between, between the community and our patrol folks, giving them the necessary information, saying, hey, this person's asking for extra patrol. Could we get somebody over here, doing things like that. And that could be in person, you know, visiting a business on the phone or through social media. But the, the value I think that she embodied the most, that I found to be her greatest quality, was, was this value that we talk about in our value statement. Loyalty and dedication to our community, our department and our profession. She's been fiercely loyal to advancing my vision, and, you know, sometimes it's hard to get buy-in with what you're trying to accomplish through an organization. But whether she agreed with it or not, she always helped advance that mission and did what I think we needed to do to, to answer that call to the public. Whether it was promoting our department publicly through, you know, obviously, social media, recruitment fairs, coffee with a cop, all these different things, she was always promoting OPD publicly. And then recruiting new members of the profession regardless of where they land. She's always told me, it doesn't matter if they come and work for us, but if they get into this profession, we've, we've helped better our society. So that was where she did a really great job. She had a passion for having in-depth conversation with folks wanting to learn more about this career. I mean, I mean, sometimes in-depth, like, I'm like, can we leave, please? But, so, but she knows what I'm talking about. There's a, again, her commitment to advancing the ideas that we struggle sometimes to get buy-in was unwavering. These are just some of the things I'm gonna miss about her being around the office. But, so Laura, thank you for all you've done for OPD. Thank you for what you've done for this community, and thank you for always supporting me and being a personal friend and helping me through difficult times. So, thank you. So this is a plaque just recognizing her. Says, "By the citizens of Oxford, Ohio, in deepest appreciation of twenty-eight years of selfless and dedicated service, July third, nineteen ninety-six, to January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five." So.
Thank you.
May as well take the opportunity.
Do what?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so thanks for all that. That was really nice. I thought when you were gonna say, like, specific things that you're gonna miss, is my, my suggestions on font? It was a thing. I just, I have a thing about font styles. He would just roll his eyes all the time, so. So anyway, thank you for all that. I appreciate it. This has been a very rewarding career. I have really appreciated the impact and connections I've made over these years. And like you said, you know, some of them are long-lasting, and I, I don't know, I just feel dedicated to them. Particularly in my lieutenant position was probably some of the more personal rewarding aspects of my job, but I missed the patrol aspect, which was really getting out into the neighborhood and meeting people at their level and, you know, helping them problem solve, so that I do miss that. And patrol is where my heart and soul lies, and, and that's where we really make our impact. So I don't know if everybody really knows this, but I really appreciate the patrol officer. They are the backbone of this police department. Police officers affect people's lives on a daily basis. A pretty small part of what we do is actually law enforcement. We, we problem solve ninety-five percent of the time, maybe five percent, law enforcement. When people who don't know what to do, they call the police, no matter what it is. I don't like that my landlord charged me twenty dollars more in rent. I mean, how is this a law enforcement? But these are the problems we always have to deal with. When, when they, it's, it's, it's problem solving and communication, and so that's how I always advertised it when we did recruitment, is we're master problem solvers and master communicators. And so to me, it's, this has been a privilege to have this career for thirty-one years in this greater Oxford area, the metropolitan area. I have two asks of you. You have such a good resource with this police department. There are really, really good people here. And right now, we're in a kind of a crisis nationwide with recruiting and, and retention. And so we need to do whatever we can to keep these people here. It's really hard to recruit. It's a long process and an expensive process, and so I think that we have some really fantastic quality people here, and we want to do what, what it takes to keep them. And I think your support matters, and you getting to know them matters. That would just be a suggestion of mine. Let's see. I just, I want, I would like for you to show them their value to you. If we don't lose the, if we don't do this, I think we'll lose them eventually. So reinforce your support and make sure that they know that they've made the right choice coming here. The second thing is, I realize that my, with my departure, you may see a difference in how the police department communicates and publicly interacts with the community, but I ask you to be patient, that there's gonna be a learning curve, and there's different personalities involved, and maybe some growing pains. So there's a lot of changes this year and a lot that have been catalyzed. And so I just ask you to give some grace in that we'll develop a new voice as a department. So anyway, I look forward to seeing everybody in a little bit more relaxed atmosphere moving forward, and, yeah, so thanks.
Thank you, Laura.
So Laura's not taking much of a break. I made sure it's okay for me to say this, but you might not wanna see her too soon. She's going to work for the Butler County Coroner's Office. Investigator supervisor down there, so in just a few weeks, she'll be doing that, so she's jumping right back in. But yeah, so you hope she's not visiting you at your house. Anyway, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
And we keep you up here.
Yes, thank you. So now, you know, as one leaves, we, we have another one coming in. So I want to introduce you tonight to Jake Rossar and welcome his family here. His mother, Jeannie, father, Jason, and his girlfriend, and many other fam, family and friends that are here in the audience. So Jake, if you wanna come up here, I'm gonna say a little bit about Jake here. He's a young man from Fairfield Township. That's where he grew up. He graduated from Baden High School. He was working for Jacob Waterproofing when he took the test here at OPD. He had been there for a little while and had worked his way up through that company and had a management position there at a young age. But he was inspired to be a police officer, probably because his, he grew up in that law enforcement family. His father, Jason, is a sergeant at the Butler County Sheriff's Office. His grandfather was also a trooper at the Highway, Ohio Highway Patrol. So back in August, well, actually, it was before that, when you were coming in for interviews and whatnot, he had mentioned that he was interested in going to the OSP Academy up in Columbus. And we hadn't taken that opportunity in a long time at, at Oxford PD. We typically go to a more local academy, because the OSP Academy is a residential academy. You stay there. And, but, you know, being a young man and being something he was even interested in, we took a shot at trying to get him into that, because it's a, there's a long waiting list to get in, and we were fortunate to be able to do so. So unlike other local academies, OSP doesn't charge us for tuition, whereas it costs about ten thousand for, you know, going to Butler Tech or Scarlet Oaks. So this, this, this was an opportunity we took, kind of foreseeing Lieutenant Fanning's retirement and looking ahead and knowing we could get someone into this academy at, at, without paying tuition costs. It's a state-funded thing, and, but what this, this is, it's a very rigorous academy. If you go back and talk to, you know, Dan Umstead or Tom Morvath or Danny Kuyer, some of those guys who went through it, they're very proud that they graduated from the Highway Patrol Academy. It's a very, very big focus on physical fitness. They, he spent every weeknight in his dorm. It's very similar to boot camp. So if, so he explained to me how if his bed wasn't made just right, they tossed his room. And I'm glad I, I wasn't there. He could tell you stories about it. But the experience was very humbling and eye-opening for Jake. He's really happy now to be done with it and ready to get on. So with that, we wanna administer the oath of office, as I mentioned earlier, and so Assistant Law Director Mazur's gonna, gonna do that for us, and then I'll come back up for his badge.
Okay, if you'll raise your right hand for me, please, and then repeat after me. I, Jake P. Rossar.
Aye, Jake P. Rossar.
solemnly swear or affirm.
solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and of the State of Ohio.
and the State of Ohio.
and will obey the laws thereof.
and obey the laws thereof.
and that I will, in all respects, uphold and enforce the provisions of the Charter.
and that I will, in all respects, uphold and enforce the, provides of the. respects uphold and enforce the provides of the chapter and ordinance of the City of Oxford.
and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer.
and will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
upon which I am about to enter.
upon which I'm about to enter.
I pledge to enforce the laws of the City of Oxford.
I pledge to enforce the laws of the City of Oxford.
and of the State of Ohio.
and the State of Ohio.
and partially and with integrity.
and partially and with integrity.
never using my authority for personal or private motives.
never using my authority for personal or private motives.
but applying the law fairly and equally to all persons.
but applying the law fairly and equally to all persons.
solely in the interest of the public peace, safety and welfare.
solely in the interest of the public peace, safety and welfare.
and I further pledge to so conduct myself ast竭 credit.
and I further pledge to so conduct myself. to bring credit.
to the Police Division of the City of Oxford at all times.
to the Police Division of the City of Oxford at all times.
So Jake's signing his oath, which he does in front of a notary or someone authorized to administer the oath, and he'll get a copy of that, and one copy goes in your personal file. Well, now I'll ask his father to come up to do the badge penning ceremony. Jake's gonna wear a badge sixty, and we, we expect big things out of him. There you go, sir.
He probably knows what he's doing.
I'll put on a badge a couple times.
Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations, Jake.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, and Jake, congratulations and welcome to Oxford. We're glad to have you here, and I hope you have a wonderful career. All right, we will then move to other public comments. At this time, anyone wishing to address council on items that do not appear on tonight's agenda, you can come forward and give us your name and where you live, and we'll give you five minutes. And if you wanna just depart now, which you might.
If you've seen the agenda, go while you can.
It's a really long agenda. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura.
They weren't all here to see us. I mean, no offense taken.
I thought when I saw the crowd that that's probably what it was.
I just thought that everybody felt really passionately about zoning.
It might be.
Okay, is there anyone who wanted to address council? I didn't think so, but welcome, everybody. Just the same, we're glad you stuck around. All right, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be removed for discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Consent agenda's approved. We'll move to resolutions. Please read the first one.
A resolution adopting the twenty twenty-five measurable action items to progress toward comprehensive plan goals.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jessica, welcome.
Good evening, councilors. Mr. Mayor. Let me pull up my. Okay, these action items toward our comprehensive plan actually began their planning back in twenty twenty-four. We had the council retreat, and we're always looking a year ahead. And so we researched items, we looked at their budget impact, and we brought it back to council in June of twenty-four to say, did we get it right? This is what we're thinking of building into the budget. And so then, during the budget process, we kind of incorporate those ideas with our budget impacts into our operating budget, kind of the premise that you put your money where your mouth is, if you will. And then we have a retreat in January, and we had a January of twenty-five, and that's an opportunity to, what I do, what I call squeeze in things that we might have missed. And so at that retreat, there were ten new ideas shared. Some of them were kind of minor without budget impacts, and two did have some kind of substantial budget impacts, and so I kinda wanted to share with you what those two are and then our plan for that. So the first one was to increase code enforcement. And under code enforcement, we had a whole list of things: housing, trash, sustainability, snow removal. And our recommendation is that Mr. Perry with Community Development will survey you and say, tell us a little bit more. What are your goals with code enforcement? What are you hoping to see? And then, once we kind of understand what you're looking for, we can come back with a plan for you, probably in March or April, with either approach in change of policy or an approach in change in staffing. So that's kind of our proposed approach there. And then the second one was to evaluate options to include solar on the new water softening plant. And so we, we have a small update on that tonight, but one of the things is, it is actually becoming quite expensive in our initial research. And so we want some permission to also examine possibly doing a solar array at the Seven Mile Well Field, which is a fifty acre site. So we may kind of, with your blessing, lump that in and then come back to you with recommendations on what we think we can do, whether it's the water softening plant or the fifty acres or some combination therein. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and the goal is that this will keep us on task, and if there's a big, major project throughout the year that comes up, we may take pause and say, you know, what's gonna be delayed or removed or changed if we're gonna try to do something else later this year. But it's supposed to be a, a guiding tool that kind of keeps us in line, and I will report to you on our progress in July and then again at the end of the year. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this resolution? Thank you, councilors. So this is a follow-up from our work session. Any comments or questions?
So one thing that, something that fell through the cracks a little bit is OptabMet and Doc. is Optab met, and the Parking, Transportation Advisory Board met in December to make a series of recommendations to council and, and to the city manager. One of those moved forward already, and so our agenda was about the snow. And some of them don't need to be on the 2025. But one of the recommendations that didn't get onto the priority list is, as some of you may be familiar, that there was a planning class, my planning class last spring worked with the, the city engineer, the community development director, the police chief, mainly looking at pedestrian and traffic safety in the mile square, and ultimately focused on some of the high accident rate streets. Like, if you've ever driven east-west on Walbut, it's scary, we have high accident rates. And so, so the students did this plan, and it, it revealed some things that could be relatively inexpensive fixes, like changing the pattern of stop signs. Other things might be longer term capital items. I guess what I'm hoping and just proposing that, on the motion to just amend the 2025 goals to, to do what the Optab had recommended, which is basically the council would just review and consider for adoption this plan in 2025, upon staff review and recommendation prioritization for, for implementation in future capital improvement budgets. But the first step being, let's look at the plan. Do we agree on the plan? And then if, if so, then with staff's recommendations, what do we do in what subsequent year? I don't think it's a huge ask in time. It's just that if we don't do it this year, every year that passes forward, the likelihood of the current civvies diminishes. So that's my motion that we, and I can send the language, which, which is the recommendation being 2025, we review and consider for adoption the plan upon staff review, recommendation, prioritization.
Okay, is there a second? All right.
Second.
Discussion on the amendment. Is this? I'm a little confused because I'm not clear on why it's an amendment to this resolution.
Oh, just because trying to respect the idea of, the idea that this 2025 list is basically the things we're, say, we're going to do in 2025. And so if something's outside of that, we just kind of want to build it in time and staff-wise. So it's just kind of an action item. I mean, we will have to come forward as a separate resolution, but we're just kind of budgeting the time right now.
Okay, do you have any response to that?
I, I believe Councilor Priths is just asking to get it on the list for '25. And I, I don't think there's a huge budget impact, so so we could just review and, review and bring back to you the plan for then possible adoption on action items within it later.
Okay. Is there further discussion on the amendment? Are you ready to vote?
Well, I do, I do have a question. Is this something that should go directly to staff first? Is there a commission?
The, the board has already kind of reviewed it, and they were part of the development of it and have recommendations. But staff hasn't had the ability to really assess, when you're talking about modifications to street traffic calming, their budget, their traffic. So I think staff needs to, staff had input, but I think they would want to have review of the plan, raise any red flags over things, and also help prioritize which are the inexpensive things. So that's
Okay.
If I might, we, we would need some time to study that document. From memory, it's been a while since I reviewed it. It talked about some things like honeybee emblems and crosswalks, things that are not typically done here in Oxford. It talked about some controversial things about mini roundabouts in, inside intersections. I'm not sure those are allowed by the state manual Uniform Traffic Code. Some things about moving stop signs or adding stop signs are dictated by Ohio Revised Code. So we would need to time to study that and give you the, the merits, pros, and cons of, of everything that's suggested in there. We would not just want to approve it and give it carte blanche.
Yeah, no, that's what
My understanding of the amendment is that it would be given to staff with time to look at it and then to come back to us. It does not imply any approval of anything because none of us have read it and looked at it.
Appreciate that.
It's just putting it on the agenda for review.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you ready to vote on the amendment?
I just have a quick question. So the fifty acres is exciting by seven mile. I'm assuming since it's not within the city limits, we would have to apply for a variance?
We have to stick with the amendment first.
Oh.
So it's Dave's amendment. And then, then you can answer the question. Any other questions or comments on Dave's amendment? All those in favor of the amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, I recognize Chantel.
So with the, I'm assuming we'd have to apply for a variance with the county since they had banned solar arrays?
We would have to coordinate with the county. It is city-owned land, so it is just an idea to explore, which, that's part of this year, is to then research if it's possible, how we would do it, that type of thing. But you're right, it is outside the city limits.
Depends on the size, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there other questions? Go ahead.
Oh, I was saying, I didn't know if Mr. Dreschek had more about the fifty acres.
Personally, I think it's a great site. It's, it's a hay production field right now. So it's relatively level. Much of it's out of the floods down by Four Mile, Seven Mile Creek. So I think it's worthy of merit.
Not a lot of trees around it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted. Please read the second.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter the City of Oxford to become an America 250 Ohio community, supporting the Ohio Commission for the United States Semi-Quintcentennial.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Jessica.
Hello again. The America 250 Ohio Communities Program is a statewide initiative that fosters collaboration among Ohio communities as they commemorate America's 250th birthday. Through our participation, Oxford will be partnering with other communities across Ohio for promotions, programs, et cetera. By this resolution, it gives us rights to join the committee because it's rights to apply for grants for implementation of some of these ideas. The staff would enjoy Oxford, will do a lot of the implementation, but we're asking for your support to be a member of this committee.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? All right. Counsel, anybody need to say anything on this one? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Makes me feel old because I do remember the bicentennial quite vividly. Seems like only yesterday. Okay, yes.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application to the Ohio Department of Development for the Advanced Energy Fund for up to $1.4 million and commit to a match up to $140,000.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jessica.
Good evening. On this one, I do have a requested amendment. This is a grant for the Ohio Department of Development Advanced Energy Program, and it has been rapidly changing. We have partnered, if you remember, with a Maresco to do, and I want to say it, Ashray Level Two Energy Audit of our community, and rapidly kind of helping us determine what we can apply for. So yesterday, we had an opportunity to sit down and look at actual projects. And we need to amend the resolution too. And I've talked to Mr. Elliott about this. The rec, the request is to apply for up to $500,000 in grant funding with a local match of up to $250,000 in funding. And I can explain. Do you want to start there?
Yeah, let's first have the motion. Will someone make the motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Now we can discuss the motion. Is there anything that you'd like to say about this change?
Yes. So what we've learned with this program is that you can only apply for projects that yield a fifteen-year return on an investment and a fifteen percent improvement in energy efficiency. You also have to apply for general energy efficiency, things like lights, controllers, windows, things like that. And then only after that, you can then look at solar. So in looking at all the projects all across the city, they evaluated the municipal building, police station, courthouse, senior center, fire station, water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, city garage, or streets garage. And so we are now ready to recommend energy upgrades across the city and solar on the senior citizen center for the total project cost of $500,000. Am I getting this right? Yes. And then the advanced energy grant would be for $250,000. The gap that the city would be responsible for is $250,000. We do believe that we will be able to apply for direct pay through the Inflation Reduction Act, having the city's responsibility end at $203,000. But we want to build ourselves a buffer with that match that we said. And so that is our recommendation. I have Rena here, if you have detailed questions, because she knows way more than me. But this is what our recommendation is.
Okay, thank you. Before I go to Rena, if she has any, do you have anything you wanted to add yet? Okay, good. Is there anybody from the public who would like to address the resolution? Okay, thanks. Counselors? I think it sounds like this is moving in a really good direction. I hope that that, those federal funds will still be available. Comments or questions? All right. All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor?
Did I skip over the amendment?
The amendment, yeah.
I'm sorry. I thought, as I was saying that, I probably did. First, let's have a vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, Heather. Now, if there's any other comments? All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
It is approved. Thank you very much. And we'll move to the fourth resolution.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Zimmer Tractor Incorporated for the purchase of a Kubota RTV and related snow clearing equipment at a cost not to exceed $55,000.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt it?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Michael?
Good evening again. The city council has asked us to do winter maintenance on Phase Four of the Oaks Trail. This will provide service to the Telawanda Middle School along Oxford Riley Road and also Ruptle Road up to Al's Landing. So we're recommending the purchase of a Kubota snow machine. This is very similar to units used at Miami University, the orange tractors you may see that are plowing and salting sidewalks at Miami. So they're very happy with the machines, and we look forward to getting a model and emulate what they've done. This has been bid through Sourcewell Joint Purchase Contract, and there's $11,300 in savings over the retail price of the unit. Glad to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this resolution? Okay. Counselors, any comments or questions?
Just to thank you for the supplemental on this, and, and also having been to the big breakfast down in the garage and seeing from the inside how much care our staff takes in maintaining its equipment. We know the equipment will find good use and a long life in Oxford, doing this and probably some other things. But I know Eric's got a place for that in his fleet, so thank you.
I neglected to say, of course, this machine will be used year-round. It will be used maintaining the entire Oaks Trail all seasons. So thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution's adopted. We'll move to ordinances on first reading. You may read the first one.
An ordinance granting the request of Matthew and Elizabeth Troy to extend to an existing city water line and sanitary line for 5280 Hillcrest Drive, a 10.98 acre parcel outside the Oxford corporate limits.
Okay. And because it's first reading, we don't have motions, just to let the public know. And we will recognize Michael to take us through this.
Council has approved utilities for this particular lot in the past, but it was never developed. So we have new owners. So we're requesting a new ordinance to make it clear to them of their obligations and responsibilities and the potential for annexation in the future, should the city request that.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, counsel? Hearing none? We'll move to the second one.
An ordinance amending and supplementing the Oxford Municipal Code by revising a chapter of Part VII Business Regulation Code, Chapter 744, revising the tobacco retailer license requirements for the sale of tobacco and paraphernalia products in the City of Oxford.
Okay. And we have Sam Perry here.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman.
We're gonna have you for a lot.
I've got eight here, I think.
Eight of them, yeah.
Yeah. I've got a slide here, just a little bit of an update on the tobacco retail licensing. I think this is the third time we've had this in front of you in the, in the past year or two. Our program is up and running. We've got twenty-three license holders. There were twenty-seven when we started the program. I think some dropped out of the market for various reasons. And this is our second revision to the ordinance. We had a concern come up from one of the business owners on transferring and found out that actually one of the things we were originally concerned about did come to be true, that it was difficult to transfer to someone buying a business at the same location. And we brought this to the attention of our grant funder. If you remember, Interact for Health, Jessica got the grant for, for us to get this program started. And they found that there was another city that had the same issue. And so this is really to make, kind of keep common practice. When somebody has a right to use a property a certain way, to allow them to continue that right as long as it's not stopped for a lengthy time period. And so this change would allow that to happen for really any property owner. But there was one in particular who was, happened to be in the process of wanting to sell the business at the time that we were asking for the license to be paid for the first, first round. And so we also went through and checked everything out again. Ben Brodигam, our part-time employee, really went through it with a super fine-tooth comb and found some other things that we could improve. And so we're making those at the same time. There was a, a gap in enforcement mechanism for businesses that didn't have a license, but were still operating. And so we closed that gap with adding a new section for that as well. So that's what this is about.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this one? Yep, come on up. Again, just give us your name and where you live, and we'll give you five minutes. Glad to have you here.
Good evening, counselor and Mr. Mayor, your honor. My name is Catherine Lucas, and I'm here as an attorney this evening, and I represent Mr. Hyren Desai. He is the owner of the Oxford pit stop. I do believe that he is the owner that Sam might have been referring to, and there's probably others that are concerned as well. I'm not here to speak about the legislate, the ordinance as a whole. The only amendment that I am here to speak of is Section 744.06. Currently, ordinance 744.05, Subpart D3, currently, as Sam stated, denies the issuance or the renewal of a tobacco retail license to the new owner of an existing business. I don't need to inform you that obviously that poses the threat of the possibility of an unconstitutional regulatory taking. I'm here with Mr. Desai because he is in the process of negotiating the sale of his business. And keep in mind, Mr. Desai does not own the property. He only owns the business. I met with Mr. Desai and the gentleman with whom he's been speaking to yesterday. And because, well, the gentleman who's, who's thinking about buying the business, he's a sophisticated owner. He owns several of these similar operations, drive-throughs, convenience, carryouts, and so forth. Tobacco retail represents anywhere from 35% to 65% of the monthly gross revenues. In addition, it's the largest percentage profit product in these, in these businesses. He stated that if Mr. Desai, if he was not able, if Mr. Desai was not able to transfer the license to him, the new owner, then he would not purchase that business. So ineffective depletes the, the value of Mr. Desai's business. So virtually, we're just here basically to speak and to, and to relate our support for the amendment, specifically Section 06.
Okay, thank you very much. And the amendment solves the problem from your perspective?
The, the, yes, I believe so. I did have a question about 744.05 that says not withstanding ABC. But I think, as I read through that quickly, I think this amendment cures the concern that Dr., that Mr. Desai had. through that quickly, I think this amendment cures the concern that Mr. Desai had.
Good deal.
We appreciate your consideration.
We're happy to help out when we can. Thank you very much. And you could just check with Sam at some point to make sure that that solves it because if there is a remaining issue, it can be resolved before the next reading.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you very much. And any discussion from counsel? I did want to recognize the Oxford Coalition for a Healthy Community who has been pushing for these regulations and is supportive and I think would be supportive of these kinds of changes to enable good retailers to continue to do their business.
I did have a question. I mean, the code was originally written for the license not to be transferable. And so I'm presuming some communities do not permit the transfer of the licenses? And do we know anything about the legality of that?
Yeah, this was a new thing in Ohio and we're not sure where the model language came from. So where that comes from is, the idea is to have a certain number limit, like a density limit, is what city council adopted. And that was, I believe, 17 at the time. And so we're over that with 23. We were way over it with 27. And so by not allowing the license transfer, it's one of the mechanisms to, over time, reduce the number of retailers. There are other mechanisms as well. People close for various reasons. And so we couldn't find that any that had had this for a long time, because it's really new, because in Ohio it's a state license or a county license. And so Interact for Health wasn't even able to answer the question. And when another municipality came across the same issue and they were quickly amending theirs as well, it really is very similar to zoning, where you have a land use that someone operates and they just continue to do it. And so although the amendment that we've written, if you've seen, does have some caveats. And so if there are violations that have been stacking up, if there's things like that that are documented, then the license transfer could not happen. So it'd need to be in good standing. So, and in some cases, a license transfer to even a new location that could be farther away from a school or a park or a library or something where, that the code refers to a youth-oriented facility is actually a good thing and more in line with council goals. And so that's, so I don't really know the history on how it would even been appropriate or legal to not allow that to continue. Because even though it's not in the zoning code, it's essentially the same thing as, you know, a vested right that somebody has. So that's kind of the extent of what I have.
If I look at the liquor licenses, that would be the closest thing we can compare to. So the Ohio Department of Commerce, they would say, "A few reminders when transferring a liquor permit. A liquor permit, like a driver's license, is a privilege. As a result, you cannot buy or sell a permit, just as you cannot buy or sell a driver's license. Instead, a permit holder can sell its business to another person and company and as part of that sale, apply with us to transfer its liquor permit to that new operator." And then it went into a few things you need to know about transfers as far as changing, if you change to a different location, obviously that applies, the same rules would apply. So I would assume that this type of license is most comparable to a liquor license. No?
Well, the state, yeah, there's no, there's not really much local control on a liquor license and those are bought and sold separate from locations. This is very location-specific. And so what we don't want to happen is a transfer happen to a new location and then another business pop up in the previous location. And so the way we've written it, there's a gap of time required to kind of minimize the possibility that would happen. So, but you're right, that's the closest thing we could look at too, but it doesn't, it's not that helpful because it's, there are, there are different circumstances because it's completely state-controlled. And ours are not going to be bought and sold separately. So it doesn't go into a pool where you can transfer them to somebody else and they can hold it. Ours would just be tied to the land. And our retail, tobacco retailer.
So under this, the way it's written now, we should never have more than the 23?
Correct.
And may have fewer if for some other reason somebody drops out?
Right.
Okay.
It would be going down. And then the only reason it would go up is we have, every time the population goes up by 1,500, but it would have to go beyond the 17. So most likely it wouldn't happen unless the ordinance was amended.
So I guess my only feeling is like whether it was careless model language or there's a rationale. It might not be the rationale that we support, but like, I guess before I vote, I can understand why a business owner would want to transfer the license, you know? But I could also potentially see if it were constitutional to not allow the license to be transferable, it also fulfills the public goals of reducing the concentration of them. So I guess I would just, before we let go of the language that we have, I just, I would like to kind of weigh that, just, no, that's really, we really don't want to do that.
That's why we went back to the grant funder. You know, they've got a network of national, you know, other professionals in the same field. Tobacco 21, you know, it's a nationwide program as well. So we felt pretty confident that if they couldn't give an answer, then there wasn't much more research we could do either. We did a lot of searching ourselves. We've been working on this for a couple of months now. When it first came up, so. But we'll take some more time, maybe there's something we missed.
Yeah, I just.
And if you do any research, you can let them know.
Please, yeah. Pass it along to me.
That's why we have two readings. All right, is there any other discussion on this ordinance? Thank you very much. You can read the third.
An ordinance repealing Oxford Codified Ordinance, Chapter 1101, entitled Subdivision Regulations, and adopting new Oxford Codified Ordinance, Chapter 1101, entitled Subdivision Regulations, for the purpose of amending provisions pertaining to minor subdivisions, inclusive of those situated along alleys.
Okay, thank you very much. And Sam?
All right. So as you recall, it's been nine months ago, there was a moratorium that we suggested after there had been some concerns over the past few years from city staff and observations that we had made. There was a work session in September last fall where we provided an update. Planning Commission has discussed the issue of development of buildings, new construction in alleys. So not the discussion of uptown alleys. I know sometimes discussions were happening at the same time. This is talking about more the outline, kind of the edges of the mile square residential where there had been some new houses being built behind other houses that are actually on separate parcels of land or separate lots. And so there was a change in the zoning code in 2017, which made the process for those to be built a little bit easier. It removed one of the requirements and so we started to see a couple more of those. And city staff started coming across kind of new challenges that were ones that existed for houses that were already back there, but seeing new construction where there's difficulty in access in buildings and providing utility connections, those were some of the issues we were coming across. Stormwater was one of those as well. So the moratorium period or the pause, temporary pause on allowing those to be, new ones to be built, did allow staff to spend some time on that. We've had a few internal meetings and then there was the council work session where we provided an update. There were three planning commission meetings. One was kind of a pretty intense work session where we got some feedback from planning commission about, you know, how much involvement do you want to have in this? And so where that ended up was, planning commission wanted to give staff a little bit more say over that because there were many things that really needed some technical expertise, that the public hearing wasn't really the best format for that. But they still wanted to retain some ability to provide some relief or some appeal power if necessary, or some potential waiver modification to the regulations. Because prior to, what was happening over the past several years was cases were sometimes being staff-approved or they were going to the Board of Zoning Appeals because of the location of the entrance and the visibility of the entrance. And the BZA was becoming kind of the gatekeeper and staff was making recommendations through the BZA process that was really kind of beyond the scope of the BZA. And so, so this series of six ordinances is all related to that. So that's where we are.
All right.
The first one being, there's not actually a lot about the alley development review process in this first one, although there were some aspects of what we call the minor subdivision or the lot split where you're doing, there's a request to merge a couple small lots together or divide a couple lots. And that process really did not anticipate that there would be requests for, high demand for development in alleys. And so it put the planning commission in situations where they didn't really have a whole lot to lean on to make a decision, a good decision. And so we just went through the whole minor subdivision code and just kind of revamped the whole thing, just to the current practice essentially and to make it more clear. And then made it clear that the intent was not to allow the creation of any new alley lots, because there are already quite a few around. But it still retains the ability to allow for an appeal process. If the decision is not favorable to the applicant and they believe it was unfair or it did in fact meet the criteria, then the planning commission could provide the relief for that.
So will this reduce the number of cases going to BZA?
Yes. Yes, it would.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Anything else you want to say before I go to the public?
Nothing further than this first one.
All right. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? There are several coming up, so take your moment if you want to talk about one of those. We'll be glad to hear from you. Counselors, any questions or concerns?
I just want to offer some anticipatory, and this is going to cover all of the eight different ones, is that this is the time when you're really fortunate to have detail-oriented staff who know how to operate a fine-tooth comb. Because this was kind of an example of a bunch of interlocking pieces that are pretty complicated. And the consequences of them can be really real for the developer or for the city. And so, you know, that if none of us could wade through all the details, I can feel confident, you know, with our, Zach and Sam do that for us. We worked, we spent many hours in the planning commission talking about this, trying to go through it as fine-tooth comb. I'm just saying that there's a lot of complexity to this, but this is where you're lucky to have competent staff who are very detail-oriented to anticipate those unanticipated consequences that are inevitable.
What they deal with on a daily basis.
With the zoning ordinance, you know, there's just like the law of unintended consequences governs this and there may be, you know? I think this will be helpful also because we put a lot of effort into this that may save us on the unified code development side. Like, this is an investment now that, you know, if there are any tweaks that need to be made, we'll have another opportunity to get them exactly right. But I think this is a good investment, so thank you to Sam and everybody else. I know we're going to be talking, we had input from the fire chief. This was an interdisciplinary conversation. And we had good input, I believe, from the stakeholders and the property owners who were following us along. And I think that's good quality control too. Like, they let us know when there are issues and they're not here tonight, which tells me that they don't view this as unworkable from their point of view.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move to ordinance number four.
An ordinance repealing Oxford Codified Ordinance, Chapter 1141, entitled Accessory, Temporary, Supplemental, and Environmental Regulations, and adopting new Oxford Codified Ordinance, Chapter 1141, entitled Accessory, Temporary, Supplemental, and Environmental Regulations, for the purpose of incorporating a site plan review process for sites situated exclusively along one or more public alleys.
Okay, Sam?
All right. This is the ordinance that really has the majority of the code language in it. This is the site plan review process. You know, I think, as I mentioned earlier, city staff had observed quite a few challenges and I think in many regards, maybe wished that the 2017 code amendment did not happen, but it did. And so that kind of created that right and formalized that right for property owners to be able to expect that when they bought and sold properties since 2017. And so we figured we would make the best of it and make a process that would consider several different aspects that we were coming across. Stormwater was one of the major ones, parking, visibility, just overall access for service vehicles. And so, and the BZA was looking at setbacks. And these alley lots were being treated like traditional lots on streets and the same setbacks really just don't apply. So that's why the image that's up there kind of shows that the image, the building on the left was really trying to be a normal building on a street, but it just, it really doesn't make sense in an alley. And so reducing those setbacks and allowing a more compact development with smaller yards, different kind of character of a development, but also requiring visibility and as you'll hear later, more fire protection standards, parking, loosening up some of the parking requirements and setbacks and really taking all that into consideration. And if it met all of those 10 categories, then staff could actually approve that. If it didn't and it was more complicated than what the code anticipated, so this is a case-by-case review, then it could be referred to the planning commission, in which case there would be notice to the surrounding property owners, kind of a normal hearing. And so, or if it for some reason is denied, then it could be appealed to the planning commission as well. So it's either a referral or an appeal, so it wouldn't go to BZA at all. So we think those would be more the rare cases, it would be more staff review, but obviously there's things we cannot, you know, predict every particular scenario.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Thank you. Counselors, anything our planning reps want to add? Okay?
I'll just add, this is the last thing I'll say about this, is that I talked about the staff part. I've heard people in the community say, "Oh, you know, development in the alleys are going to stop." I think that the way the planning commission, I think, council shares the belief that our alleys are potential assets. We have them, some people have a right to develop them. And so if people have a right to develop them, how do we ensure that it's safe, it's of a high character? If you go up and down our alleys, currently many of them are gravel parking lots jammed with SUVs. It's not really the highest and best use of the land. It doesn't add to the character of the community. It doesn't add housing of any different kind. So I think that, I know that, say, I'm probably in 2017, we went in a direction that you wish we hadn't gone down or we made it complicated, but I think this aligns with a lot of our goals in our community. So if we're going to do the development in the alleys, how to make it safe and of a good character. And so I think, I like to think it was a worthwhile investment of time because I think the product hopefully can be good for the community on a bunch of different points. Yes, it works for student housing developers. No, it's probably not going to be affordable housing.
But not everything does.
But student, yeah, not everything is. And student housing is important in our community and those gravel parking lots full of SUVs are not doing much for the city of Oxford in any regard. So, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions? We'll move to number five, please.
An ordinance repealing Oxford Codified Ordinance, Chapter 1143, entitled Districts, and adopting new Oxford Codified Ordinance, Chapter 1143, entitled Districts for the purpose of referencing a new site plan review process established in Chapter 4111 pertaining to sites situated exclusively along one or more public alleys.
Okay, thank you. Sam?
More exciting code language.
It's very exciting.
So this is adding alley development provisions to every one of the zoning districts where it's applicable. So this is pretty simple, it's just kind of repeating the same thing, the way the code is structured, it's got to be put in multiple places.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Thank you. Counselors? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move, please read number six.
An ordinance repealing Oxford Codified Ordinance, Chapter 1149, entitled Parking and Site Access, and adopting new Oxford Codified Ordinance, Chapter 1149, entitled Parking and Site Access, for the purpose of revising residential parking regulations.
Okay, and Sam? What does this one involve?
This one involves, yeah, it is. Channel 9 even called yesterday asking about these agenda items, but then they changed their mind today, so. But this is revising residential parking regulations for, really, because of the how compact the development is in alleys, it allows the parking setback to be exempt and when it's near a property line, because under the current code, there's a requirement for a three-foot setback from a property line. In an alley, you really just have parking that enters from any location, there's no real driveway. And so, and it's really difficult to enforce. It just doesn't make sense from a standpoint of priority level for enforcement of green space, because if the setbacks are being reduced, then there's really not that much left. left anyway.
So what is this doing as far as parking?
This is allowing, if there's agreement between adjacent property owners for parking across a property line, this is allowing that to occur.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
But it also adds a requirement for a raised curb when the parking space is less than three feet from a building, and that would be in alleys and everywhere, because right now, we do not have that.
Well, that will be helpful, then, that cars may not be parking in the alley.
Or right up against the house.
So, is, and did the fire chief have comments on this one, or did he review it?
He was given an opportunity, but I don't think we talked about this particular code requirement.
Okay, I'm just very sensitive.
Sure.
To fire access.
We do have an ordinance on alley blockage, and police can cite for that, and I don't know if they can toe for that or not, but maybe if it's bad enough.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this one? Okay. Counselors, any comments or questions? All right, let's move to number seven. And there's more to come.
We're over halfway.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're making progress.
As of this one, we're into the second half of these ordinances, please.
An ordinance repealing Oxford codified ordinance, chapter 1129, entitled Administration, and adopting new Oxford codified ordinance, chapter 1129, entitled Administration, for the purpose of clarifying the site plan reviews are subject to the same notice requirements that are typical for public hearings.
Okay, Sam? That sounds pretty self-explanatory.
It's adding it to the same list.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this one? He's already really described it. Okay, counselors, you good? All right, please read number eight.
An ordinance repealing Oxford codified ordinance, chapter 1159, entitled Definitions, and adopting new Oxford codified ordinance, chapter 59, entitled Definitions, for the purpose of amending the definition of frontage to exclude measurements along alleys.
Okay, and Sam, would you describe this one for us?
Sure. So this is, we added a frontage, a lot frontage definition about four years ago, and this is amending that definition, just to make sure that no one thinks that having frontage on an alley is the same thing as a street, so you can't create a new alley lot, essentially, because it doesn't have frontage on a public street.
Okay.
So this is just adding that little disclaimer in the frontage definition.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you. Counselors? Seeing none, move to number nine.
An ordinance creating a new section, 150113, with local amendments to Ohio Fire Code of the City of Oxford pertaining to alley developments and fire protection requirements.
Okay, and Chief John Dethridge, it's great to see you.
Good evening, it's good to see you all.
Tell us about this one.
So, I'll give you the Cliff Notes version.
The Cliff Notes, yeah.
I know we discussed before about access issues in the alleys, it being hard to get to these houses, they're really close together, all that kind of stuff. We've come up with a solution, and it's to provide fire sprinklers and smoke alarms that dial out, so that we can get as early a notification as we can, to try to get in there to do something if there is an issue.
Okay.
Really, it's the only thing we could come up with. We talked about it, I talked about it with my guys, trying to figure out good ways to attack a fire when you're in such a confined space, and there really isn't a good way.
Right.
So basically, trying to prevent it or stop it in the incipient phase is really the only option we could come up with.
So this fire sprinkling would apply to new builds, is that correct?
It would apply to new builds, and I believe remodels.
And major remodels.
There's a section there about remodels, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just would point out for the record that I lived in an area where my entire house had sprinklers, and I was very thankful for them, so.
We should think about doing this to all the rental houses.
It should be, it should be. All right, is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Counselors, any comments or questions?
Well, this is where, to me, the QAQC of the development community, if they didn't think they could bear the costs of this, they would be here tonight, you know, and I do not believe we received any public comment, and so...
It's the right way to go.
And it is the right thing to do, and the fact that the development community is not here tells me they can work with this, because they pay attention to this stuff. And so, I think this is awesome, we're moving in a new direction, and, yeah, I hope we can think of...
Well, nobody wants a fire.
Yeah.
And nobody wants to trap people in a house with a fire and have, as we have had in this community, students or other tenants die because they couldn't deal with it, because everything was packed so tightly.
Yeah, I think we should absolutely consider making this universal.
Yeah, I think it's worth consideration.
I have a question. The trade-off would be worth it, but is there a chance that some of these callouts would be false alarms, or do sprinklers only go on if there truly is a fire?
There's always a chance that you're going to have false alarms, but I think the trade-off's worth it.
Yeah, I agree.
For the early notification, because the fire's going to be more advanced before the sprinklers are going to be activated, you know, especially if it's a smoldering fire, it can burn for a long time.
Yeah, it's not a smoke alarm.
And cause problems for the folks that are in that building asleep, you know, they could be dead long before the sprinkler ever activates.
Right.
Well, it also gives an opportunity for the fire staff to come in, see if there's anything else that needs to address, that they can help educate the tenants. That's a common thing that happens.
It is, they do that a lot, yeah.
Thank you.
What's the threshold for a major renovation? Like, when does it become?
There was something in there, I don't know if it actually spells out...
I don't see anything, but basically, this just deals with alley development.
Here it is. D.
It's on the last page, on page 326.
Yep. Structure alterations more than 25%.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Having asked those questions, I want to make sure that the public has, there's so many that I can't recall, to be honest, all the time, but is, is there anyone from the public who wants to address this one? Okay, not hearing any. I just wanted to make sure that I had given the public an opportunity. All right, any other questions for staff?
My only question is, and I, because I think we've addressed this on accessory dwelling units in the past, the kind of, the rating for the siding and stuff like that, we were comfortable with the current existing building code for, you know, I know, remember, we had that ADU on Walnut Street, that was a similar kind of situation, dense proximity to other structures, and we feel like the, I can't talk the language, but basically, the siding and stuff, we're comfortable with that level of protection, building to building.
There was a combination of the building materials, and there was also a sprinkler added to that building.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I guess, yeah, so does this, is the building material thing something, or we feel good with that right now?
So I think the site plan review would help to cover that.
Okay.
Because that's a staff review, and I believe that's one of the 10 categories.
Okay.
And then there's also building code review, which, if the site plan's done by a surveyor, will have distances from surrounding buildings.
Which then ties, I think, the state building code.
And there's things in the building code that address the construction of the outside of the building.
All right. I presume you had looked at that as an option, and...
But we're not recommending, we don't have any local building code amendments.
Okay.
Which is, the reason for that is because we have an outsourced building official, it's a little bit hard to force local amendments.
But we're doing these fire inspections locally, okay.
Correct.
Okay. Please read number 10.
An ordinance approving preliminary and final plan development application and preliminary subdivision submitted by Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati for 32 townhomes to be situated on 3.464 acres currently addressed as 601, 603, and 607 West Chestnut Street, Oxford, Ohio 45056, with conditions.
Okay, and Sam, talk to us about this one. We're off of the code.
Okay.
Now we're onto something new and exciting.
Yes, we're talking about housing, attainable housing.
Yes.
One of your goals that's been talked about for the past several years.
Yes, it is.
So, the property on Chestnut Street was acquired through American Rescue Plan, I believe, it's been a while now, and there was a process for, there was an RFP done, and if you recall, there were three responses, and Habitat ended up being the partner that city council chose, and because of the type of building and layout, it could only be done through a plan development process, and so, a plan development process goes through the planning commission to determine, and that process is in place, so that it can be considered, does the product meet or exceed what otherwise would have been allowed by the underlying zoning code? And if it does, then are there any other potential nuisances, or things that could be created by the development, if so, how could it be mitigated, sort of like a conditional use? And so, Habitat and Bear Becker Engineers worked together to draw up a plan, also held a neighborhood meeting to get some, you know, kind of let people know what they're thinking, and that resulted in some feedback and some modifications, spent a lot of time with city staff as well, and so, what they have designed, and I'll flip back and forth just a little bit, I only have a couple of slides on this one, is a townhome-style building, and these would be able to be purchased on individual parcels within the overall acreage there, and there would be 32 of these, so the single-family attached would be a phrase to describe them.
But they each have their own lot.
Correct. And, but they would be attached as well, and then the buyer could own that parcel of land in the building that it is on. And this would be a new public street called Mitchell Court, that would run north and south into a small cul-de-sac, and then there would be alley, there'd be an alley on the west side, and then parking areas running parallel to the buildings, and then a retention basin, detention basin in the rear, and all the grading that would happen as part of that, and then several new plantings of trees. And there actually wasn't a whole lot of public comment, other than one adjacent property owner, there's the Development to the West, who had, we had some correspondence with them as well, but some of that goes back pretty far, and so, we were able to kind of take some of those comments into consideration. One of the property owners to the east has been working with the city and Habitat on some screening that they feel would be appropriate, and so, we're trying to find something that would strike a good balance, and that resulted in one of the conditions that you saw in the recommendation from Planning Commission. And, really, I think with all of the back and forth between the city staff, and the engineer, and Habitat, and a couple of the adjacent property owners, we feel like it's at a place where it's pretty close, and the conditions are worded such that they would allow some tweaks to be made. The Habitat and Bear Becker have been working with the Service Department on one of the conditions that the Planning Commission recommended for traffic calming, and have come up, they're getting pretty close, I think, to a solution for that narrowing point where there's a pedestrian crossing, to have a traffic calming solution there, that's been accepted. Habitat is asking for condition number eight to be removed, because one of the requests in the collaboration with the Planning Commission was to have a, have really a pedestrian path that would go between the two buildings to the west, that would be able to access the alley, because it's kind of just like a wall, and I'll go back. So on the screen...
Help us understand where you're talking about.
So if you look on the screen here, I've got my arrow that's kind of...
Yep.
So, the request of the Planning Commission was to have a sidewalk that would go between the buildings, to be able to access this alley, thinking that people that live in the development may want to go back there, kids on bikes or whatever, and they're probably going to be going between these buildings anyway, and so, giving them a, kind of a defined hard surface to go on, instead of just kind of tracking up the yard. So, Bear Becker and Habitat took that comment seriously, they spent a lot of time looking at that, knowing that it would, it's, it would be difficult, but they did take some more time to look at that, and they haven't been able to find a way to fit that in. That doesn't prevent people from walking through there in the grass, but being able to put a sidewalk in there while there are utilities, that's really the main issue, because the utility company typically puts all of the little, you know, connecting points right on the property line. And because these units are, they're not rental units, there's property lines for the sale of the land, so that results in the transformers and telephone boxes being put right on that property line.
Okay.
And they also looked at possibly moving the one building farther south, closer to the creek, in order to give a little bit more space, which would cause the loss of a dwelling unit perhaps, or having to construct a retaining wall to account for all that, and so, they're asking, and they can speak as well, but I'm just saying that I hear them, that they're asking for that to be removed, so.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll let the petitioners come forward if they'd like. Just give us your names.
My name is Joe Hansbauer, and I'm CEO of Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati. And so, you know, general comments is, we are definitely excited, so moving through the planning phase and kind of working through the comments, there were a number of them, I think this was number eight of the conditions, and I, you know, I think the rest of them we have found to be workable. This one is, you know, it's just, it's a tight, a tight space and a tight site, and leaving space for those utilities, it just doesn't leave a lot of room for sidewalk, and certainly, you know, we didn't want to push the building south and lose a unit was not preferred, certainly.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, counselors have any comments or questions?
Excited.
Yeah, I'm very excited. I'm, as everybody knows, I'm a big proponent of Habitat, and I think this is a great project.
Yeah, and this is, it's a kind of testament, because what we're looking at here is really a bundled process. I mean, you have two separate things, you have subdivision and plan development, typically go through a concept phase, preliminary, final, we're doing these two processes all in one, and the idea that we were able to get here without really any delays, because I know that it's all time-sensitive, and, you know, and without any cutting corners on the process or the quality of the product, like, it was, the Planning Commission, we had the luxury of talking about some of the finer points, because the layout, I mean, sometimes these things come through, and you're just like, it doesn't make sense what you're trying to do, and we table and go back and forth, we had the luxury to talk about some of these finer points, because everything else was laid out in a really quality way. And I think, again, talk about QAQC, the neighbors, you know, as we know, in the beginning of this process, they had a lot of fears, and I think that the process itself helped resolve some of the fears, to the point where later, the comments that we're trying to talk about are minor adjustments to vegetation screening. We, you know, the sidewalk thing, I think we recognize it wasn't something we, it was a make or break, I guess I would just ask in the development, it's one of those things, if you look at how things function, people will want to walk through there, you know, people will want to walk from their cars to their front door, and you may get into a situation where it kind of becomes a trespassing situation, because that is someone's private property, right? And so, if it's not a sidewalk, I mean, I think when we try to do this, we can't, the development's going to be what it's going to be, but as a planner, when I, when we miss an opportunity to anticipate a problem, and then you see the goat path, or you see the conflict, I don't know what the answer is, but you will have users trying to pass between those two buildings as a way through. And I can imagine the conflict that could result if one of the private property owners is sensitive about their private property, I guess, so I'm not going to stand in the way of this, and if eight has to go, it has to go, but as the developer of a site that people will live in have to function, I think you just, I don't know how you anticipate it.
All of these are accessed by an alley in the back, parking, and then a... All of these are accessed by an alley in the back, parking, and then a back door.
Yeah.
So, it's hard to understand why they would need to go.
I think it's also that the demographic, there would be kids in this neighborhood, you know, and they're going to be circulating every which way, and, and the most, the direct line of path is the one that, and, and this is a kind of a long line of buildings, and if you have to go all the way around, so, again, it's, it's not at the level of planning, and if the sidewalk can't work, it's fine, but I would just ask you to continue to think of a softer way to handle it, or, I don't know what it is, but I'm not going to, it's not a thing to pick an issue up, but.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has questions or comments?
No, I just want to say that, that I love this plan, and since, since the plan's been published, and the, those great elevations have been published, I've had residents on both sides of the development that I know that, that were, either didn't come to the meetings or were afraid to ask questions, it came to me, and I was able to show them the elevations in the plan and explain it to them, and they're all very much fine with it now.
Yeah.
Like David said, just some minor screening adjustments, and we're in great shape.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will have a second reading at our next meeting, where we will vote on it, and we have a second one. You can read number eleven.
An ordinance approving the final subdivision application and plat for the Clarence Place subdivision consisting of thirty-five lots situated on three point four six four acres, currently addressed as six oh one, six oh three, and six oh seven, West Chestnut Street, Oxford, Ohio, four five oh five six, with conditions.
Okay. Sam, this is the final of what we just talked about.
This is the, this is the division of the land, so, it's three more lots than the number of townhomes, because there's some, some non-building lots, some common space lots.
What will the, the address numbering will be?
It will be mostly Mitchell Court.
Mitchell Court.
I think there's going to be a couple that are Chestnut, kind of on the northeastern corner.
But they'll be somewhere in that range of six oh, odd numbers.
Yeah, it'll be in that six oh one range. One thing I will add to the subdivision part is, we've been working with Bearbecker on, a request of Planning Commission was to add a easement if a trail connection could ever happen over to Melissa Drive across the creek. I mean, it's, city's property right now, but in the process of transferring that property, we would, they've agreed to an easement that would allow for the possibility in the future of a bridge over the creek. It may be not in our lifetime, but get it on the paper now, so.
Hasn't happened on Maryland Drive yet, has it? But that's, all right, that's what that is, all right. Any comments from the public on the final? Okay. Councillors, any comments or questions?
Well, that easement, sometimes those easements, you don't use them right away. Whoever was involved in the North Ridge subdivision made sure there was an easement connection to Kramer, and it took fifteen, twenty years, but because it was there, we were able to build a trail connection without a taking. And so, thinking ahead now means, because there is a stub on the other side of the creek, it's poor connectivity for pedestrians, it might be on the long-range list, but we've got the easement, so I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you for forbearance, and thank you for sitting through this long meeting for your item. We will move to second readings now. Please read the first one.
An ordinance levying upon the lots and lands enumerated in the list of estimated assessments and the amount set forth on such list, and setting forth terms for payment of assessments.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
No, no.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Michael?
No changes from first reading.
Okay. Thank you. This is a long process. Good we get here. Is there any comments from the public on this item? Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Let me call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pitheridge?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. Nably?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted, we'll move to number two.
An ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-seven eighty-three, supplemental budget ordinance number one, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2025.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
No.
Is there a second? Thank you. And we have Heidi talk to us, is there any difference?
Good evening, mayor and councillors, there is no difference tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the public? From council? Please call the roll.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Pitheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Nably?
Yes, and the ordinance is adopted, we can read number three.
An ordinance repealing code section five twenty-one oh six, duty to keep sidewalks in repair and clean, and adopting new Oxford code section five twenty-one oh six entitled Duty to Keep Sidewalks in Repair and Clean.
Excuse me, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
No.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded?
Thank you, yes. The proposed ordinance that was before you at the last meeting, and we had some discussion at council, and then staff and I met to discuss some of those ideas, so the changes made to that proposed ordinance since the first reading are, in paragraph B, the owner or occupant is given twenty-four hours of the day following any such deposit of three inches or more to clear snow. Sidewalks need to be cleared to a four-foot wide surface down to concrete, so if you remember, we had a time in there, so now we've given them twenty-four hours. We've also stated that it would be when there's three inches or more of snow, and then we also state that they need to be cleared to a four-foot wide surface down to the concrete. So, that's one change. In paragraph C, we've added an administrative fee of forty percent, and we did that because we don't want property owners to rely on the city, and we're hopeful that, you know, this will become standard practice, that they'll realize that they need to clean their sidewalks, and so that's why we added that forty percent fee, that's similar to what we have in our fee ordinance, if they damage city property, so we put that in there. The last change is that we wanted to clarify where this new policy will apply, and so it basically states that this only applies to the city designated snow routes plus US twenty-seven. If you've looked at the designated snow routes, which we have on our city website, you'll notice that twenty-seven north and south are not shown as part of our designated snow routes, and that's because, you know, there's no parking on them now, but we want to make sure that they, they get cleaned. So, this is a big change for the city, but it's one that I think we all feel is needed. As we went over those goals, I think David mentioned that, you know, we have this one about safe and efficient travel for all modes of transportation, and it stated by March twenty twenty-five, passing ordinance to improve snow removal on high pedestrian sidewalks, so this, this will accomplish that, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you very much. I wanted to just make note that a number of people have written to council using the comment form, and we've heard them, and we've read them, and I think this ordinance resolves most of those issues. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address council on this one? Steve?
Good evening, Steve Chaffin, six oh two Fairfield. As a result of last snowfall, concerns have been raised regarding sidewalk maintenance. As a homeowner property located on a snow route, I would be affected by this proposed ordinance. My concern is this ordinance would impose an unreasonable duty on me to clean my sidewalk. We had this recent snowfall, took several days for me to clean my sidewalk. I tried to do it myself, but the snow was just too heavy, so I had to hire some people to do it, however, that took several days to find someone due to the demand and the lack of workers that were available. Ohio law does not impose a duty on homeowners to clear their sidewalks with some limited exceptions, and the city of Oxford has determined I will not enforce its obligation that is provided in its current code. So, now we're proposing a brand-new ordinance that I think just goes too far. I would propose that rather than enact a new law that may not be workable, we try to work with the existing code. The city has enacted a property maintenance code, that seems to be more reasonable in the approach to solving this problem. Property Maintenance Code, section three oh two point three states, all sidewalks, walkways, stairs, driveways, parking spaces, and similar areas shall be kept in proper state of repair and maintained free from hazardous conditions. Simply by adding a definition to the existing code as to what constitute a hazardous condition would be a simple fix. Using the existing due process provisions that the code allows for would be a much improved way of dealing with this problem. The property maintenance code provides for a complaint-driven process, so people can complain about a particular area, but it also allows for a city to do a specific site inspection if they believe a danger is present. It provides for notice prior to any action, and gives an opportunity for the homeowners to repair this on their own prior to any kind of action by the city. It allows for an appeal process, and both a civil and criminal enforcement process, including the provisions the city can remedy the item itself and assess the cost. So, I urge you to take a more cautious approach in this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you. Councillors?
I, you know, I just want to say thank you, it's one of those things that, like I joke, it's, you know, it was just Groundhog Day, and the snow is, always feels like Groundhog Day in Oxford. It snows, we have the same debates on Oxford Talk, and we seem to make no progress, and in fact, it seems to get kind of worse, and, and for some people, it's not a problem, because the city does a monumentally wonderful job keeping our roadways clear, so the drivers enjoy that investment of time and labor, but if you were a pedestrian, you know, it was an unusual event, but there was snow and ice that made this sidewalks unsafe for almost an entire month, and for the majority of our population in Oxford, the majority of them, if you look at students, are walkers, you know, they are relying on our sidewalks as infrastructure. Ohio, it's just the way it is, that the roadway is the city's responsibility, and the sidewalk is that of the property owners, but the property owners in Oxford just historically have, some people do a wonderful job, but, but often the people who you would expect would do a good job, like businesses, don't do such a great job. So, I think this is one of these things that I think there will be a number, many years in which this does not get triggered at all, you know? And I think as, you know, we, what we want to make clear is that nothing ever prohibits anyone from voluntary sidewalk clearance, you know, like, the city, we would prefer not to be doing this, right, you know? We would prefer not to be doing it, or, so it's always best, and it should be most cost-effective for people to do it themselves, and so, but, you know, I, I, the last anecdote is, you know, I, I know of multiple people, I was just at Kefenia, and, and there was a gentleman who was trying, who was blind trying to find his way to McCullough High, and he was having a little turn around, and I thought, could you imagine what it must have been like for him for the last month to navigate our community, you know? I'm not saying this ordinance is going to fix that, but I think if we're committed to, some of the things we're committed to in this community, including equity, maintaining the sidewalk for those people who need to use it is just the right thing to do, it's right for everyone to do, it's going to be good for businesses, and my hope is if we do this for long enough, that the contractors will develop, people will figure out how, people will turn to each other's neighbors, like, I, I don't have a sidewalk myself, I'd be happy to shovel the people across the street from me, and if everyone did that, I think we could find a way to make this work, and then you'd be left with the people who just won't do it, and then the city will be there. So, I really want to thank you, Doug, I know that you and I have been talking about this for a long time, and it would be just as easy to let this thing go, but I think we may be able to turn things around on this, so that in the future pedestrians can enjoy that infrastructure safely in spite of the snow, so thank you.
Other comments? Jason?
I was just going to say, I, I agree with that, and the number of students and children, young children having to walk in the street that I saw was unacceptable, I mean, one incident, and we regret not passing something like this that might prevent some of those instances, so.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate Mr. Chaffin's comments, and I appreciate the extension of the time from ten AM to twenty-four hours after the fact. Having grown up in Toronto, in the days when it used to snow a lot, it snows less there now, that was just something that, I think it, maybe it's a difference in, in country, but that was just something that we did, we had to clear our sidewalks, and it, it just made for a better community. My husband and I did a walking challenge all through January, where we had to walk at least a mile outdoors every day, no matter what the weather, we did it, but there were times when it was really hard to navigate, where, you know, able-bodied, fairly healthy, but I think this will help a great deal, and, and as councillor Pitheridge said, we'll find ways to fill the gaps as a community.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
So, forgive me, I was not here for the last meetings, conversation. How quickly, so, they have twenty-four hours, if they are not compliant within twenty-four hours and the snow remains on the sidewalk, how quickly do we expect the city to be there in the twenty-fifth hour?
Well, keep in mind that it's written such that the city will do it, or a private contractor that we hire.
Okay.
You know, we have limited staff, we're going to focus on the streets first, as we always do. If we don't clean their sidewalk, we're not going to assess them, so.
Right.
I'm hopeful that we'll have contractors that'll step forward and say, hey, I'm done with these driveways and lots, and if you're willing to pay me, I'm going to do sidewalks for you, because we don't have the staff to deal with this. This is a big change for us. We're going to be buying a sidewalk plow, but we're going to keep, you know, the oats trail clean first, and so, you know, as David said, as we all know, we don't have that many big snow events, but who knows what the future holds, you know, so if, if it's three inches and it continues to snow, they're going to have twenty-four hours, but it may take us forty-eight hours before we can get a contractor there if they don't do it. And I recognize too, that, you know, that there's things that we need to figure out, like if somebody's not, if they went to Florida and they don't know about the snow, how do we handle that? If someone's elderly and can't do it, hopefully we'll have fraternities or some athletic sporting groups that might help us, you know, we'll figure this out, but, you know, I think we need to do this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree, I think that's, I know you can't really write an allowance for good faith effort into an ordinance, because that's not how ordinances work, but there's a difference between, you know, I can get out and shovel my sidewalk, but I need to wait a few days because the contractors are busy, and some, you know, like, I think the extreme negligence we saw in some places uptown, so, yeah, that makes sense to me.
Well, and if you, you know, all the gas stations I drove by, their lots were clean, their sidewalks weren't.
Yeah.
None of them clean their sidewalks that I recollect.
Yeah.
And it's like, I know if they would have told the contractor, I need you to clean my sidewalk too, they'd be clean. So, you know, this is going to be an education process, you know, our plan is, in the early fall, to send a letter out to all the property owners, and I really miscounted when you put me on the spot and asked me how many property owners, I think I said a hundred, it's more probably like five hundred, you know, and there are several large property owners that have different LLCs, so, you know, once they get a letter, and we'll probably send one letter with all their properties listed there, you know, they'll, they'll know that they need to be ready for this, and if we don't have that three-inch snow, that snow year, then that's fine, but if we do, and we have another snow event like we had in the first of January, you know, then they'll, they'll know that they need to clean their sidewalk, or we're going to do it, or a contractor will do it, and we'll bill them for it.
This may have the consequence of inciting individuals to start a business to do this, and that they will advertise to people.
Yeah.
Who are not able to do it for themselves.
Like the college house painters and the movers, and the new one this year, which was, we'll hang your Christmas lights for you.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, those things tend to spring up.
They do, the only problem is, you know, snow is hard to predict.
Yeah, it is hard to predict.
If we have a year, you buy a new snow blower, so you get into the business, but we don't, we don't have that snow.
It might be that future young Michael Smith who can buy a shovel at Ace. I did see kids on Oxford Talk walking around, I mean, once upon a time, that was something you did on a snow day. Real quick clarification, just for anybody who's listening, the city is kind of focusing enforcement on these snow routes, but the ordinance in terms of what it's asking from citizens still applies to all sidewalks.
Right.
You know, this doesn't mean.
Existing ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, the existing ordinance, it still.
Still applies.
It still applies, so if you're not on a major route, that doesn't mean like you're off the hook, ideally, the city's taking responsibility for ensuring the clearance if property owners don't, but all of us, then if we shovel to the main street, then we have a navigable network.
And I did get questions, and we talked about it last time, but I'll reiterate. That if the snowplow were to come by and cover up what has already been done, the city will not charge for the clearance.
Yeah, we, we'll have to work things out, I mean, yeah, if we.
There will be a lot of working out.
If we aggravate the situation, and there will be places where it'll be tight like that, so, you know, we all have seen, had examples of people walking in the- we all have seen, had examples of people walking in the street that really shouldn't have been, you know.
Right, dangerous.
Staff mentioned to me a lady with a baby carriage going up US twenty-seven north. Not good.
Mrs. Dutton recalled, which is not something that we're going to be able to help, her situation, but she had somebody in a wheelchair
Right.
stuck in the street. So, I think at least on some of these routes, that will be enhanced. It won't be enhanced for everybody and everywhere.
I, I just have a question. Not that I think we need to change the language, but I think I'm the only person that lives on a snow route that this applies to, and it gives me anxiety to see that within twenty-four hours and not a time, because I can't tell you how much, I just stare out the window and say, we need to go sweep it. We need to go sweep the sidewalk, you know, because I don't know what ti- like, at what point is it bad? Or when, do we have to go every inch, half inch? So, I think that if we are, and especially busy or traveling, and we shovel the three inches and it snows more, it just, it gives me anxiety to not know clearly what that time is. I don't know if that's just me, but that, like, and I know there's going to be a lot of grace, but it just like...
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's three inches, and you got twenty-four hours when, after the snow event ends, you know.
Could give you more time.
After it ends.
After it ends, after it ends, you know.
And I'm wondering whether, like, I know we...
So, it could end at nine o'clock, and the old ordinance would have had you have, you clean it by ten.
Yeah.
Billy then texted me, he's dropping something off. He texts me, he's like, it's snowing. There was like a quarter inch on the ground. I was like, oh my gosh.
I do think a little bit, I don't know whether, if we use Nixle to communicate about snow emergencies being hoisted and lowered, like, I think some, it's, if it were possible to use a little bit of, of those sort of means, where you said the snow event has ended, you know, we ask that citizens consider, you know, clearing their sidewalk. I think people tune into that stuff, they're really paying attention to...
If it can be objective, so people know like, oh, hey, it has stopped twenty-four hours from now.
Starting town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, I don't know when it stopped.
Well, think about, I mean, let's say we had a foot of snow. You know, somebody goes out and takes away ten inches, but later on, it snows with, I mean, you know, we're going to have to work this out. This is not a perfect system, but this is certainly a step in the right direction.
Okay, are you ready? Please call the roll.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pitheridge?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. This ordinance is adopted. Hope that it works. And we will move now to announcements and communications, and I will begin with city manager.
I'm going to pass, and I don't really have anything to share with you.
Okay, good.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Good.
I appreciate the time you allowed me earlier.
You bet. Heidi? Okay. Back row, nothing. Okay. Sam? Oh, this is awesome.
Nothing, thank you.
First round?
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to break the cycle.
All right.
The township trustees are going to discuss the, or vote on the township land use plan tomorrow. They'll be at the middle school at six thirty. I was the city's representative of that committee. I think it's a good plan, but if anybody wants to be there, they'll be discussing it in a big public meeting, so.
Thank you.
We should have an emotional support golden retriever at every council meeting. That was so cute, and I was very focused the whole time.
On the dock.
On definitely our agenda. And in some exciting spring news, the Oats and Honey five K, ten K planning is well underway. We should begin promoting that soon, so that will be the same day as the Oxford Bee Festival, which is...
And when is the Oxford Bee Festival?
Well, Mayor Snively, I'm glad you asked. It's Saturday, April twelfth. So, be there and buzz around the trails, and to our police and fire chiefs, I will be emailing you to talk public safety shortly. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Shantel?
I wanted to thank Jessica for our conversation earlier about housing. We do have a housing advisory committee meeting, which I will be joining as a guest at College in Elm, because we're expecting a very large crowd of people. Everyone is welcome there at five o'clock, and even though we might not agree one hundred percent as a group yet, I think that we can make good progress to make sure that we're not leaving residents behind or turning a blind eye to their plight, so we're looking forward to making headway.
Thank you, Shantel. Al, um, excuse me, Amber?
That's okay. I lost a very dear friend to cancer last week, Tuesday, and she was a very important part of this community, Dr. Martha Castaneda, and I just want to share my love for her family, her husband Darrell, her daughter Mira, her mom Misselli. Miami University lost a luminary individual, and the services for her celebration of life will be at Kumbler Chapel on February fifteenth. There will be notices in the Free Press, but I just want to acknowledge that her life lit up the lives of many people around her, including mine.
Jason?
I just want to say, in the face of everything that's happening in the federal government right now, to stay strong, that all is not lost, and to keep up the good fight.
Thank you.
So, just a little bit in that vein, I think many of us feel powerful at the, powerless at, at the national scale, and we, we forget how much we can do locally, and, and I just want to offer my personal thanks, because I'm a person who loves to walk, I love the snow, I love Oxford, and whenever it would snow, I would see a side of Oxford that just disappointed me, you know? Like, people weren't as civic as they could be, and then the conversations were always finger-pointing conversations about like, who, who, you're so, and, and it was, it was, I was just disappointed, both about the problem and the lack of the ability to seemingly solve it, and I had almost given up on it. Like, maybe that's just the way Oxford is, but I remain optimistic that even, you know, what seem like intractable problems at any scale, if you just think about them, there's a solution. And I think with this one, there's going to be a way that we can turn away from finger-pointing of like, what, to like, helping each other out, you know, and so I think, you know, I won't draw some kind of metaphor about all of us, we have to dig ourselves out from under, but, you know, I just want to say that it's, you know, to, if we can make a dent on that thing for the many people who need to walk on sidewalks during snow events, so no one has to walk in the street, and a kid can get to school safely, that's meaningful. We've done good work, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
You know, Amber reminded me that Prudana's celebration of, you were going to mention that. Well, go ahead then.
Yeah, I would, her announcement reminds me that we have lost other important people in our community recently. My neighbor Eric worked at Miami and died very young, and very unexpectedly. We lost Prudana, who's, we have talked with before. Her service will be on the fifteenth at one PM at Oxford Presbyterian Church, and they will have a reception afterwards at the Oxford Presbyterian Seminary, which is a block away, because they expect so many people. So, if you are going to go, I recommend you get there fairly early. And we also lost Karen Simpson, who was a neighbor of mine and was a very important person in our community. She worked for the church. She worked for the Oxford Presbyterian Church as their clerk, and she was a neighbor and a really good person, and that family went through losing a son and a mother within three weeks. And so, my heart goes out to that family, and I hope that they are in the process of healing. And that, oh, the, the last thing I want to say is, out of personal privilege, and it is in line with Jason's comments, and I think that regardless of how one voted, you may not have expected some of the things that have happened involving some people who are unelected, who have gotten a hold of all of our public and private information, including our social security numbers and all of our personal data. For what purpose is unclear so far. All I have to say is that if you are not a little bit scared of that and a little angry about that, then you're not paying attention. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and thank you.